Good evening. It's approximately 6:06 PM. We are reconvening for public session. Roll call.
Trusty Gardner.
Present.
Trusty Flores.
Present.
Trusty Anboy.
Present.
Vice President Fox.
Present.
And President Young.
Present.
And Trusty Taylor.
Present.
Stand for president, please. The governing board met in closed session and this is the results of this. Closed session B, number one, information was received, directions was given. Two, information was given, direction was given. B, three, information was given. And received. B. Four, information was received. Are there any public comments?
Actually, that's something I was going to address. We have, we have some issues with our agenda a little bit out of sync. So I think the next item we were going to have is that we would be doing the adoption of the board agenda. So I would ask that in the adoption of the board agenda, that we would change the order of closed session. Can you roll that up so I can see? So, item A should really be item D. Recession to closed session because before you recess to closed session, you have public comment on closed session items. And then if you could roll it up a little bit more, so I can see D, then you do roll call. So we did it in this order, because this is how you're supposed to do it. You do C, D, and then you, and then you recess to closed session. So in any case, we'll need to have the minutes reflect that and that that, that that agenda will be changed tonight with an addendum. And then we were also going to pull item 6E from this agenda. So if somebody would want to move that.
Somebody have, I'd like to have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the admission of six, pulling 6E, and like Superintendent Spalding said, changing item A to item D.
Roll call.
Second.
Is there a second?
Oh, I can't hear.
I second.
Roll call.
Trusty Gardner.
Aye.
Trusty Flores.
Aye.
Trusty Anboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Trusty Taylor.
Aye.
So we have a number of presentations this evening that, that we're going to bring you. So we're going to start, we have three school and site presentations. Penny Cook Elementary will be presenting, VCSUSD Expanded Learning Program tonight will be presenting, and the Vallejo Women's Basketball Program will also be presenting tonight. So those will be your three presentations. And we also have a resolution, and then there will be a presentation after that from our auditing firm. So if we could start with Penny Cook Elementary, please? Are they in the hallway?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Superintendent Spalding, Board President Dr. Young, and to the board members, and Vallejo City Unified School District, I am Denisha Randolph, and I am happy to serve as the principal of Penny Cook Elementary School. And to be a member of an amazing team of staff and students. This evening, just a few of our leaders will share some information with you about being a leader in me school and about Genius Hour. So at this time, I will move out of the way and let our leaders present.
Good evening. My name is Dominic and I am a student at Penny Cook Elementary. Today, we will talk about Leader in Me and Genius Hour. Leader in Me is a program where we learn about the eight habits of highly effective people. We also learn how to set goals and to have an accountability partner to make sure we reach our goals.
Hello, my name is Deondre and I'm in Ms. King's class. I'm going to talk about my two favorite habits, synergize and be going to the end in mind. Our habits are something we should follow so we don't get discombobulated or off track. My favorite thing about these two habits is that they both help me get in shape and not rush. I am proud to be in this kind of school because we can take our time, not rush, and develop the leader in me.
Hello, my name is Leah and I'm in Ms. King's class. And my favorite habit is be proactive and put first things first. Something I like about the habits is that one of them represents me. The one that represents me is be, is being proactive. I would say being proac, I would say that being proactive represents me because I brush my teeth without having to be asked. Learning, learning leader in me makes my day better and because me, it makes me and my friends happy because we learn new things about being a leader. I also like learning the eight habits. I like learning about being a leader be, because people start to look up to you and respect you.
Hi, my name is Ava Diggs. I'm in Ms. Pissot's class, and today I will be talking about the habits. The eighth habit is find your voice. It's the one that I can sometimes struggle with, but if I'm around the right people, I can find my voice. And I know a lot of others feel the same way. I know that the habits are not just about you being your best self, but also encouraging others to be theirs. That is what leader in me means to me.
Genius Hour is once a week for 10 weeks. Genius Hour helps us explore our passions and encourages us to be creative.
Hi, my name is Elliot Sanwan, and I'm a second grader in Ms. Gilmore's class at Penny Cook. As a leader in me school, we learn about the eight habits of leadership. We are participating in Genius Hour, a time each week where we explore areas of interest to us. We are learning about art and the beach. In second grade, I'm enjoying learning about artists and, and replicating their famous works. I love the opportunity to sharpen my saw, habit seven, and strengthen my mind. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Barnes, and I'm in Mrs. Gilmore's second grade class. As a student at a leader in me school, I use the habits I learned in my classroom, on the playground, and at home. I like habit six, synergize, together we are better. I am participating in the beach study during our Genius Hour. I enjoy using my voice, habit eight, by, to share my ideas with others. I also enjoy sharpening my saw, ha, habit seven, by creating a beach with paints and materials. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Omar and I will be talking about the presentation that is being held in the district office board meeting. Me and my partner have been working on the rocket ship for a few months, and that I am a part of the clay class for Genius Hour and Ms. Pissot's class. There are also a few other teachers that do Genius Hour, like Ms. King's class that does dance. Ms. Mesa Frye, my, my classroom teacher is doing art and robotics. Mr. Sharma is doing diversity and cultures, and, and Ms. Persinger is doing technology. My favorite thing about Genius Hour is how me and my partner used to restart over and over, six times, but we finally perfected it. Thank you.
Hello, my name.
Hello, my name is Jeremiah, and I am a first grader at Penny Cook Elementary School. For Genius Hour, we do planting, we water them every week. If it's wet, we need to put a little bit of water. And my plant is 15 inches.
Hello, my name is Diane, and my teacher is Ms. King. I'm going to talk about Genius Hour, and what I do for Genius Hour is art and robotics. What I'm mainly working on is art. All teachers are doing something different, like my teacher, Ms. King, is teaching children how to dance, and Ms. Pissot is working on how to use clay. And last but not least, Mr. Sharma is teaching children about different cultures. A great thing about Genius Hour is that everybody got to pick what they wanted to do.
We still have a few exciting things coming up at the end of the school year. We will help our community by doing service projects, and we will have a leadership day in May so that we can show our parents everything we've been doing as leaders.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much. Trusty Gardner.
Thank you so much for being able to get up and talk to all of us. You all did a wonderful job. I am so impressed with your reading skills. I, I am just beaming. You guys did a great job, and you should be all proud of yourselves and proud of your teachers. Be sure and thank your teachers for doing a wonderful job in preparing you for this evening. This is always my favorite part of the board meeting because I get to hear from all of the great students and hear about all of the wonderful things that you are doing in the classroom. And Leader in Me is a wonderful program, and I see, I can't count all of you, I see a number of leaders out there, and I can't wait to see the good things that you're going to do in your life. So, good for you.
Steve Fox.
I also want to thank you for everything that you said in coming here and being with us, talking about which of the eight habits you connected with. I tried to write them down fast. It was very interesting, and I want to read more about them. But to listen to about the Genius Hour, playing with clay, dancing, cult, learning about culture, it sounds fascinating, all the things you get to do, and I'd like to be there that time, too. Sounds like fun. And then sharpening your saw and how to be as sharp as you can be. Thank you so much for teaching us and telling us what's happening on your journey. Please come back, and again, I can't wait to see the leaders who are going to be here in Vallejo. Thank you.
Deon Boy.
To all of our scholars, thank you for coming today. It was, it was a really eye-opening presentation for all of us. To the parents, again, we thank you from the bottom of our heart. We know how much effort and time you've put into, to your kids, and they are our kids as well. And thank you, and, and again, to all of us that have had, at Penny Cook, again, we appreciate you and thank you.
Flores.
Thank you for the presentation. I think I want to echo Trusty Anboy, you know, I, I look out, you know, I see the students we have, and I see all the parent participation and parent involvement, parent support. You know, keep that up. That, that's really, really important. That's a key factor to it. But I, I did want to ask if any of you were willing to share some of your wigs? And, one more, perfect, and then one more thing, to the person that was telling me about their plant. So I just recently moved into my own place, got, uh, got some plants, and I named them. Have you named your plant? And if so, what is the name?
Jay.
Very cool name.
I want to say.
Wigs are our widely important goals, and my goals, my academic goal is to practice more of my math, and my personal goal is to connect more with my friends.
My goals are to practice on my hand. My academic goal is to practice on my handwriting, and my personal goal is to work on my flexibility and get on a track.
My academic goal is to be a human calculator.
Yes.
And my personal goal is to be a story writer.
My personal goal is that soon I want to be an engineer.
Anybody else?
My pers, my personal goal is to be the best teacher of the year.
Very much for sharing.
This is so wonderful. It's so wonderful, and it, you know, Penny Cook is special to my heart because that was my first teaching assignment coming to VCSUSD. First school that I was assigned to, I had a fourth grade class. So Penny Cook is very, 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 very special, and to see the outpour of what's being produced there. I mean, it just brings, you know, so much warmth to my heart. These young men and women can articulate and tell you what their personal goals are. That's just amazing to me, just amazing. I think out of those personal goals, we had one teacher, one, 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 okay, look at that problem. Yes, but this is what it's all about. It's growing our own in our community. This is what it's all about, encouraging our young people to be all they can be. And that, you know, the world doesn't define you, you defy the world. So keep it up. Thank you so much for coming and enlighten us, enlightening us on what you're doing at Penny Cook. It's all good. Trusty.
Let me tell y'all a secret. Mike, uh, Mike in trouble for this, okay? But y'all speak and read better than half the high schools I know. I'm just saying that. So keep up, so keep up this work, and you will do fantastic things in this world. I see, see, see.
Thank you, Principal Randolph, and to the students of Penny Cook. And, and the Leader in Me is one of my all-time favorite programs that we do in this district. And, and you were able to witness tonight. It, it's, it's been going on for a while, and it has really taken root. And there are other schools that are, are, are starting that journey as well. But what you, what you see is what I saw a few years ago when I was first introduced to it. And I had a kindergartner come up with a big binder like this and told me about her wildly important goals, her personal goals and her academic goals, and just talked to me like an adult, you know, and I was so impressed. And, and you, you've seen so many more of, of the students at Penny Cook be able to do the exact same thing. We're teaching people to be responsible for their own lives, and I just really love that program. On deck for tonight is Carol Lewis, who's the coordinator of the Vallejo City Unified School District Expanding Learning Program. And Carol reminds me many, many times that our day is not from eight to three, but, but that's... Yeah, that's, that's, that's the third one. Um, Carol reminds me that, that, that the, the school day in, in Vallejo is not eight to three, but eight to six. And there's a whole bunch of activities that occur after the school bell rings. So she and her group are going to talk to you a little bit about our expanded learning programs.
Thank you. Good evening, President Young, Vice President Fox, the trustees, Superintendent Spalding, happy birthday. Here is an order. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Our presentation is structured, structured around the four pillars of strategic plan and how the expanded learning program supports and complements the regular school day plans and goals. This is the definition that California Department of Education has on their website for expanded learning programs. What it does is it encompasses outside learning that happens also for the school year and when school is out. So we functioned, we focus our, our programs around three important components. The first one is academic support, the second is physical activity, and the last is enrichment. Our enrichment classes are designed by student interest in 24th century learning skills. So what we do is design our programming around a student getting good at something and then making that connection to real-life practices. And then that promotes the college and career exploration all in itself. But don't take my word for it. We have brought some guests to, to talk about some of the vendors that we have contracted in our programs to bring some of those 21st century skills. So I would like to introduce to you Alexandria from, this is a stu, a fourth grader from Stefan Manor. Is Alexandra not here? Okay. Melissa Gomez, this is a fifth grader from Cooper Expanded Learning? Yes. Oh, yes, it's Cooper, sorry. She is with the ceramics program that happens in the expanded learning program. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Melissa Gomez, a fifth grader at Cooper, Johnson Cooper Elementary. And I am here today to talk with you about what we do in our clay class and how clay helps us.
Hi, I'm Ms. Riley. I am an instructor with after-school playing clay, contracted at Johnson Cooper Elementary. And today I want to help Melissa present one of her projects. And we are going to just talk about the skills she used to create it, that she learned through our course.
So a couple of skills that we learned is a pinch pot, a coil, slabs, and scoring. So the first one is a coil, which is a, a roll of clay that you can make in any shape. And the bottom piece is a pinch pot. And the way we stick it together is we score, which are hashtags, and we add a little bit of water.
And I want to introduce Alexandria. Come on up with your project, honey. Alexandria's been in crochet class at Stefan Manor. Let her introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Alex, and I'm in fourth grade at Stefan Manor.
And it looks like your instructor's standing behind you. So I will let Ms., Ms. Hamina ask you some questions about your project.
Okay, at first I introduce myself. Good evening, everyone. My name is Herminia Malales. It's my first time to be in the, in the front of everybody. So anyway. I'm the, I built, I, I work with Vallejo Project for after-school class, and I'm teaching crochet. So I have, well, first, I start, I just started last year. I started MIT. So then the Mare Island Summer School and Stefan Manor, which is Alexandria goes. So now, I was with them for, it's been a few months, it started, when this class started, yeah. So I, she had a project that she wants to show you. Take it out. So how she learn, how, how did you first learn? Well, the way I, I started for them, because of course it's a beginner, so I started for them to know how to do the chain. And then after that, a single crochet. We go farther until I asked them what, what, what kind of project though they want to do. So now Alexandria made the purse for herself. So how did you manage to do it? Did you enjoy it?
Well, Ms. Hermy, she helped us, she started, as she said, she started with the single crochet. And then soon on, she let us start with double crochet, and we could make scarves and bags and stuff, but I decided to make a bag, and she helped me with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as you can see, what we do is we take the time to incorporate the four Cs. Oh, do we? I'm so sorry.
Cora, come on up. And Ms. Fari, come on up.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Cora Reiderman, and today here I'll be showing you what I built. I built a marble maze. And I made some obstacles and some dead ends. And this is the beginning, and this is the end. And do you, and this is a little trap right here, and I have some dead ends, it's all over here. And some little obstacles was over here.
So Cora, what did you have to think about before you built?
I had to think about, or to where I should put, hit everything, and where I should put the entrance, and where I should put the exit, and all the obstacles.
What if your marble gets stuck, what should you be doing?
I should fix where it got stuck, and the, we, you think how I did it to fix the problem.
Would you like to share your robotics too? So all our program includes robotics, and this is our...
So all our program includes robotics and this is our beginning robotics from Legos. And this is called Lego We Do. And we love this program because you could build it like an engineer and you could code it. So they're actually developing two skills, coding skills and mechanically they're building it. So if they don't build it correctly by following direction, it's not going to work. If they don't code it correctly, is it going to work?
No.
No. So will you show everybody how you code it? So what's coding, Cora?
Coding is kind of like talking but to a robot. It, and it will do what you put into it and it will do it, whatever you said to do.
All right. So this is the robot that Cora built. And what is this called?
The spinning bird.
A spinning bird, all right? Do you want to code it for us? All right. All right, good job. Can you code it to go the other direction? There you go. Good job. And can you make it stop?
Yes.
Good job, all right? So we really want them to learn coding and learn that a machine is different than a robot because of coding, right? We can make it do whatever we want it to do. So this is the beginning. Expanded Learning actually put in a lot of money to have the next stage or next level of robotics that is sitting behind that. It's called Spike, Lego Spike. It's a brand new program and the kids are enjoying it so much. So that's for the older upper grades. All right, thank you so much, Cora. Did you have fun?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Fari.
Thank you. So as you can see, we do incorporate the four Cs in our program. So what we do is we allow them, we teach them how to critically think through their creativity. And then they take that thought process, learn how to communicate it and then collaborate and execute. And so that, we take that fundamental that happens in the regular school day, put it in some vocational trades and after school and we let them run. So our next slide. Okay, so here's a little bit more information about robotics. I want you to notice how this enrichment component specifically supports the school day learning. Our students are giving the opportunity to give trial and error, but without the pressure of being graded and they get to do it at their own pace. That then allows us to meet students right where they are. So academic support is another required component in the expanded, I mean, in the expanded learning program. We support academic growth by utilizing tutors and teachers to implement intervention. And then we provide protected homework time so that students can have the space and time they need to succeed. This allows us to meet, I mean, this, we do this by teaming up with the school day staff and whoever gives, has a desire to give students extra time after school. We believe that in order to have, to grow an academic child, we have to work together. And so we provide the space and opportunity to do that. One impact that this component strengthens is the overall, the, I'm sorry. One, one of the impacts that this component strengthens is the overall growth on standardized tests. Students enrolled in the expanded learning program are more likely to grow academically compared to the students that are not. It is important to us that we provide the space and opportunity to support what's being taught during the school day and what may have been left behind. Thank you.
All right. Our third component is a physical activity, which is the third required component of our full-service programs. Staff plan physical activities along with our contract vendors to deliver specific instruction in sports and exercise. We have also started a middle school intramural basketball sports program at all six of our campuses that serve students in grades six through eight. Each participant receives a participation medal, which symbolizes their time and effort as well as celebrates them for participating regardless of their skill level. And we're also so excited that this Saturday Hogan is hosting our championship games. And we will be expanding these programs within our upcoming school year. Through these physical activities and sports opportunities, expanded learning programs encourage self-esteem, confidence, leadership, and teamwork. They also help support mental health as well as academic performance. And they promote fitness and our students' overall well-being. Thank you.
So I've got the last few slides and I'm going to be speaking to pillars two, three, and four. This slide is, shows how our focus as a, as a group in our improvement process was the staff-to-student relationship this year. And so we did some assessments and found at the beginning of the year that 20% of our students in the program reported that they felt they did not have an adult at school that they could count on. And so we implemented some interventions and redid the assessment mid-year. And now we're at 13%. So we improved our outcomes by seven percentage points. Oh, point it that way. Our improvement process has not just been around this one aspect, the student-to-staff relationship. But our sites also engage in improvement process at their own levels. And we've been supported with that work through our partnership with Northeastern University's Lead by Learning Group. And it's really helped us elevate the level of professional learning on the part of the site coordinators. And speaking of staff, each, there are 16 programs across our district. Each of them has a VCU SD site coordinator. And there are two expanded learning assistants. Those are also VCU SD staff. And then we contract with GVRD and Level Learning to provide the rest of our direct service staff, which can be four to five staff. And then this year I was able to bring on our late last year and this year assistant managers. And those are the young ladies that you heard from earlier this evening. Regina, Renee, and Tiffany. And if Renee and Regina look similar, it's because they're twins. And we'll be bringing on a fourth assistant manager. And those assistant managers allow us to have that site-specific professional learning with a lot of support for the new staff that are coming on and new coordinators and be able to do deeper work. Oh, we also collaborate with our staffing partners to make sure that the program's in alignment across all the kinds of staff. And in the last 10 years, our program has been recognized by CDE three times for excellence. Our staff has been recognized. So the professional learning that site coordinators have engaged in over the last couple of years with our partner has taken a lot of courage and vulnerability on their part. The learning for them as professionals is, is deep learning and they're very reflective. And we record our, our processes for improving programs on a, on a sheet that is a collective history of thinking. And so at the end of the year, staff can look back and see what they were thinking about, what needed to be improved and what their evidence was for that. And mid-May this year, they'll be doing a presentation to their peers and, and anybody who'd like to come on to, to speak to that learning that they've engaged in over time. And pillar four, our community-centered education. I really feel like expanded learning programs are the expression of community-centered education. Staff are from the community and have a deep connection with families because they're often the face of the district. For many of our families, at the end of the day, those parents see our staff and have that positive interaction. And our programs also sponsor family, family events. Those two pictures on the previous slide were from what's called Mommy's Group at Lincoln Elementary that happens once a month and is becoming very popular. And this has Superintendent Spalding said at the beginning of the day, or at the beginning of our presentation, the impact is a third of the student's day. So we know the school day doesn't end at three o'clock. It ends at six o'clock. And that means expanded learning is three more hours we can have with students to make a difference. And about 30% of our students participate in expanded learning in grades TK through eight, have that experience with expanded learning. And as fast as we can fill some of those vacancies, we'll, we'll even get ramping up to serve even more. So thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about expanded learning. And that concludes our presentation. Trustee Fox?
First, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it and we learned a lot. The first thing I wanted to talk about was when we, students get tired after being in school and it's like, well, why do I want to stay? You gave us reasons why. Not just academic, but also social, so social and emotional reasons. I loved, thank you, students who came today, seeing what you crocheted. Beautiful. My sister does that and now I can see where, you know, how it all comes together. I love the robotics and the coding coming together. And then with the Legos, that was really cool. And how you had to figure it all out and map it out. That's also math and engineering and all kinds of things put together. Then we also had the clay, how to make an art piece and expand on that. And then you also talked about sports. So you have a well-rounded program of the why, to hooks, why should we be, what are we learning? I do have a question, though. Is there a time during the program to maybe, as a teacher, I have to ask this question. Is there a time to help with homework? If a student is struggling, say, with their times tables or with writing a paragraph or something, is there a time for that?
Yeah, absolutely. If you, you have the presentation and there is a slide where we talk about intensive interventions, but also, and then not every student is in a tutoring group, right? All of the students get some protected homework time. And if, and I'm finding it's happening more and more. Some teachers don't assign homework, but we always have an academic piece to the academic time.
Wonderful. Do you, also do any type of gardening or cooking?
We have, cooking is a very popular program. We're laughing because that's, yeah, we absolutely do. And actually, we brought in a, a partner this year called Lift Enrichment. And they've been, they place chefs in our program to do nutrition, education, and cooking programming. But yes, there's just been a long history of cooking being very popular in the program.
Thank you. And I think also just keep asking the teachers, what are they doing during the day? Tying those standards and connections to skills the students then will be practicing after school is reinforcing what they're already learning during the day.
And at its highest level, that's exactly what it looks like. The site coordinator connecting with the teachers and saying, what are fourth graders struggling with right now? Well, how can we support that?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Trustee Garner?
I just want to thank you for coming and presenting to us. You know, I read about expanded learning, but it's different when you see exactly what's going on and I am so totally impressed. And all of the kids that came to present, thank you so much. The creativity that is involved in every one of you is phenomenal. And I think that that sometimes is lost during the day. You don't have the opportunity to really be creative and to think outside the box, so to speak. And I think that this program certainly reinforces that. So I'm, I'm really proud of all of you and I'm really looking forward to expanding the program. If we can get additional kids involved, wow.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can really go someplace. So thank you so much. Open my eyes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that it was seen, for sure. And I just really want to acknowledge, you know, these kids have all come with their contract vendor connections and it allows us to really expand the offerings. So a thank you to Monique from After School Play and Clay, Fari from Brick Space, and Hemmy from Vallejo Project for guiding our kids through those kind of specialty programs. It's really important. Trustee Flores?
I want to thank you all for the presentation and thank you, students, for sharing your projects. You know, I just kind of want to talk about the importance of these kind of programs from both sides of it. Years ago, I was with, with the martial arts schools I was a part of, I was actually teaching. And we were teaching a lot of the kids at Lincoln. And we would, and we would see the kids' improvement behavior-wise, grade-wise, as we gave them an avenue of where to invest in themselves, where to start learning to believe in themselves, where to get those little extra bits of whatever it was they needed at that time, you know? And now with my son, it's, it's funny because I'll go pick him up and if I pick him up too early... You can't, Dad, why are you here so early? Can you go wait outside? And I get chastised. I was, you know, I was talking to his mom about it just today about, or yesterday, we might have to pick him up early and we're going to have to incur the wrath of Adrian, you know? But to me, what that says, what that says is how much fun, how much enrichment, how much opportunity the kids are having there to the point that it's like, nah, I'm not ready to go home yet, Dad. And it's like, he needs me to pick him up at like 5:59. If I don't, if I, if I pick him up anytime before 4:50, I get in trouble. So, so I thank you all for...
That's data.
I thank you all for, for everything you do in those programs.
You're welcome. Trustee Garner? Sorry, I forgot to turn my light out. Okay, trustee Amboy?
Again, thank you for presenting today. One thing for us as a board is when you were presenting and showing us the four pillars and how much that living document means to us. And to see it as a result from the kids, it means so much. And again, for all the vendors, thank you for your time. We definitely appreciate what you have given to our, our children. It's invaluable, it's priceless. I hope one day that, that Alex, you can teach me how to knit one pearl one. But, but again, thank you again very much.
I want to thank you for having, giving your time and your expertise to extend the learning environment of our children. It's very important that they have this extra experience. And I'm really impressed that we put a strategic plan in place. And you presented and gave examples of how you were following it and the result, the assessment of how effective it was. Now that tells me that that plan is making a difference. It's making a difference.
Yeah, we're all about the coherence.
Yeah, it's making a difference. And thank you again.
You're welcome.
And we all on this board appreciate you for that extra.
Thank you.
We also want to say we're all products of VCU SD. So we want to thank you.
All, all three of these ladies were also site coordinators at one time.
Last school and site presentation comes from the Vallejo High School head coach Brennan Harris and the Lady Redhawks to talk about a pretty amazing basketball season this year.
Good evening, Board. My name is Coach Harris. I'm over at Vallejo High School. So today I'm going to be introducing some of the young ladies that we have on our team. First, I want to introduce my assistant coach, Danae Walker. Second, you guys want to come on in?
Come on in.
Okay, I'm going to start with my other, I call him my second head coach over here. This is Sean Taylor. And then the young ladies, we have Tilia Davis, Jasmine Cardwell, Zuri Washington, Toseya Sakio, Marielle Codilla, Elia Ash... Toseya Sakio, Marielle Codilla, Elia Ashby, Tara Greenwood, Kamira Thornton, and Chanelle Chavez. And we are missing a few of the, our players as well. Okay, so I just want to talk about the season that we had. This is the first time in fourteen years since Officer Kaput was at the head. This is our first time winning the league championship. We finished tied for first for the league, and then we, thank you. And then we had the league championship game over at Bethel High, and it was a nail biter, I guess you can say. We beat Richmond High School, and we won the league champion, league title. So just to talk about the, the season, and I always use the term perseverance because it was very, very rough in the beginning. We actually started over the summer, and we had a summer league that we participated in. And it was the first time that we won a medal. And my four years there, it was kind of rough because we suffered a lot of losses. But these young ladies, they dedicated themselves over the summer. They came to practice, they made sure they showed up to all the games, and they fought hard every game. And to me, they represented Valeo High to the fullest, as well as the city, too. And just over the course of the season, we had a lot of ups and downs. We had some personal losses and just a lot of heartache, I guess you can say. But the girls fought through everything, and they played, I'm not gonna say their butts off, but they played, they played their hearts out, you know, every game. They, you know, gave their entire one hundred, ten percent effort. And first, I want to say that before the season started, I told the young ladies that we were going to produce, I mean, not only come in first, but we're also going to have the league MVP. And that's one thing that we made sure we did. We had Jasmine Cardwell, she came from Armio High School. Yeah, she ended up making first team all-league, and she won the league MVP, as well as Vicki Head. She's not here right now. But I wanted to invite her up to say just a couple words. Come on, Jas.
You know, it was, you know, a fun season with all these girls over here. And out of our four years, this was like the best year. Yeah, that's it.
Let me ask the coaches, did you guys want to say anything?
All I would like to say is these ladies put in tremendous amount of work. Over the summer, they actually won the summer league also. They played good schools too, like Crandylet, which is the girl's schools for De La Salle and stuff like that. So they played really good competition and really got a good win. And then we moved on to the league, and we went through a lot of ups and downs, you know? But at the end of the day, they came out and they fought hard every game. And I told them that is the representation of Valeo. We fight to the end. And the thing, the thing that I love most about them is their sportsmanship. They show sportsmanship all year. I mean, picking each other up, even the other teams. We have teams that we're close to, that we see in the public, and they'd be like, hey, guys. So I just love how they carry the Valeo name around. And to all you ladies, thank you so much. You represent us in the best way possible, and you're really great, and I love all of you. Thank you.
Well, in closing, we just want to say thank you, Board, for recognizing and acknowledging the hard work that we did this past season. So thank you all.
We would like to say happy birthday to the superintendent, too.
I would like to ask, did you guys have any celebration of this event? I mean, this, this is monumental. This is something that you had to persevere in order to get to where you got, okay? Because as I was listening, you didn't always have a win. Took that, that loss and built upon it with a team mindset. Now, we're going to do this together. So that's perseverance. Perseverance always wins. So consider yourself winners all the way around, okay? Even when you step outside that door, you are somebody, not just Valeo, you know, basketball team. You are somebody. Okay? Just remember that. And you're going to do wonderful things, maybe not in the basketball arena, but there's other aspects of life that you have to tap into. But with your mindset of perseverance, I'm going to do this, I'm going to make it work for me, and I don't care about what's going on with other folks. The world is yours. Good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Trustee Amboy.
Ladies of Valeo High and the coaches, again, we thank you, and we're very proud of you. Everything that you guys have learned on the court, you will definitely take it outside of the, outside of the court as well in life. And what you've proven and what you've shown us today is that hard work doesn't come easy. And every, each, every, each and every minute, it's just, it's, I'm just so proud. And I know that you guys are going to do great things, you know, in the future. And however we can support as a district, you know, please let us know. And again, not only that you represent Valeo High, but you represent Valeo, and that's something we're, we're all proud of here, every single one of us. This is our home, and you, you've taken care of your home. And ladies, thank you again.
I just want to say thank you for putting women on the map again here in Valeo. So that is a good feat. I'm proud of all of you, and I'm really was very impressed with the sportsmanlike. If you can greet your opponents with a handshake and a hello, that's more than a lot of people can do these days. So thank you very, very much for showing that you are a true athlete and a true sportsman. So thank you very much. I'm proud of you all.
Thank you for your presentation. Now let's go out there and win, win, win again.
So we're back to, yeah, adoption.
Hey, let's go into adoption resolution forty sixty-five in support of K-12 adult education. Do the pleasure.
I will. Resolution four oh six five in support of K-12 adult education. Whereas, the first recorded adult education class in California was held in the basement of St. Mary's Cathedral in San Francisco in nineteen fifty-six. The class was authorized by the San Francisco Board of Education to teach English to Irish, Italian, and Chinese immigrants. John Swett, who was the first volunteer teacher for the class, later became state superintendent of public instruction. And by the way, there's a, a school district that's named after him across the river. Whereas, adult schools have been utilized on numerous occasions to assist the state as it dealt with significant social, political, and economic issues through job training programs during World War II, immigration reform in the nineteen eighties, and most recently, the Great Recession. And whereas, adult education in California overcame its biggest challenge as a result of the severe economic crisis facing both the state and the nation in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Funding that was previously reserved to adult education was redistributed to other levels of education in the state, resulting in many adult schools decreasing in size and some closing. And whereas, there are currently over six hundred thousand adult learners enrolled in ESL classes at adult schools across California that are in the age range to have children in our public school system. The impact of adult education is felt across generations, particularly for early childhood learners who have been characterized as a priority of the governor and legislature. And whereas, Valeo Adult School at Al Berenger Educational Center successfully serves Valeo and the surrounding communities through its collaboration with its community college partner and community-based organizations through the adult education system. Valeo Adult School at Al Berenger Educational Center served nine, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven students in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And whereas, Valeo Adult School at Al Berenger Educational Center provides significant and varied classes and programs to serve Valeo and the surrounding communities, including high school diploma and equivalency programs, English as a Second Language ESL classes, citizenship classes, classes in healthcare training, computer technology training, job preparation classes, and more. And whereas, Valeo Adult Education, Valeo Adult School at Al Berenger Educational Center serves two hundred and thirty-eight students in the high school diploma and high school equivalency programs in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. The programs help minimize the high school dropout rate. Thirty-six students earned their high school diploma, and fourteen students earned their HSE in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And whereas, Valeo Adult School at the Al Berenger Educational Center served six hundred and thirty-two students in, in the English as a Second Language program in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And parents enrolled in ESL classes learn how to assist their children with schoolwork and dedicate many hours a year tutoring their own children. And whereas, don't go too far. And whereas, Adult, Adult, Valeo Adult School at the Al Berenger Educational Center provides a safe environment for students free from discrimination or bullying, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. Whereas amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic, Valeo Adult School at Al Berenger Center continued to provide critical programming and services to our adult education students and their, and their families via literacy and basic skills to help ensure our K-12 students were successful as they navigated the challenges of distance learning to finish the school year. Whereas amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic and ongoing today, Valeo Adult School and at the Al Berenger Educational Center provides important short-term career training programs, including critical health, for critical healthcare positions, to address both the short and long-term impacts and to respond to Governor Newsom's charge to meet the moment and address the needs of our communities. And whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Valeo City Unified School District strongly supports, and supports, supporting adult education as an important part of the Valeo City Unified School District. Be it therefore resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Valeo City Unified School District strongly urges the Governor of California, Gavin Newsom, and the California Legislature to recognize the important role of K through twelve adult education in addressing the needs of our communities in the short and long term and to increase access to programs and services for the most in need and not yet reached members of our great state.
Thank you, Superintendent Smalting. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number four zero six five? Trustee Garner.
I move that we adopt resolution four zero six five, recognizing adult education.
Do I have a second? Trustee Flores.
Second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Amboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young. President Young.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye. Next item is the adoption of resolution number four oh six seven, recognizing April second, twenty twenty-four to April eighth, twenty twenty-four as Autism Acceptance Week and April twenty twenty-four as Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas autism is a developmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, robbing individuals of their ability to communicate and interact with others. And whereas, in November two thousand fifteen, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, Health, Prevention's National Health Statistics Report concluded the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder has risen to one in every forty-five students. It's actually higher than that now. Whereas autism is four times more likely to occur in boys than in girls, but can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, or other factors. And whereas, in two thousand fifteen, it was estimated the United States incurred approximately two hundred and sixty-eight billion dollars in costs for autism research, educational spending, housing, transportation, employment, therapeutic services, caregiver costs, other insurance and non-covered expenses, and productivity losses. This figure is forecast to increase to around four hundred and sixty-one billion dollars by the year twenty twenty-five. And whereas, early diagnosis and intervention programs lead to significantly improved outcomes for individuals with autism. And whereas, the Valeo City Unified School District employs qualified and caring individuals who educate and work daily to improve the lives of students with autism. And whereas, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four to April eighth, twenty twenty-four is designated Autism Acceptance Week, Valeo City Unified School District designates April twenty twenty-four Autism Acceptance Month to increase public awareness of the need to support individuals with autism and the family members, educators, and other professionals who teach and care for individuals with autism. Now therefore be it resolved by the Valeo City Unified School District Board of Education as follows, that it celebrates National Autism Acceptance Month from April second through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, that it recognizes and commends the family members of children with autism for their sacrifices and dedication in providing for the special needs of children with autism, that it stresses the need to begin early intervention services soon after a child is diagnosed with autism in an effort to improve potential outcomes for people with autism, and four, that it salutes the student, the teachers, paraprofessionals, and other educators who possess the desire, caring, and skills necessary to teach and assist and respond to special needs students, including those with autism, who work tirelessly to educate and provide programming for special needs students in role in the Valeo City Unified School District. And as a parent of an adult child with autism, I particularly appreciate this resolution, and especially items three and four, where we're talking about early intervention, and where we talk about the really critical role that educators and designated instructional services play. I've seen that myself, and, and there are many great outcomes that can be had for young people with autism with early intervention and with really great and important and intensive care through, through the educational grades.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution number four zero six seven? Trustee Flores.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number four zero six seven, recognizing April second to April eighth of twenty twenty-four as Autism Acceptance Week and April of twenty twenty-four as Autism Acceptance Month.
May I have a second? Trustee Fox.
Second.
It was moved by Flores and seconded by Fox. Roll call.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Amboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any agencies?
Audit report. Item D is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report for the board. And Ms. Lozov, you could introduce the board to our new, our new auditor, who comes from the same auditing firm, but a new auditor for us right now.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Superintendent, Board of Trustees. We have Mr. Nathan Edelman, our new current auditor partner. And he is here to present the close year of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit report. Okay?
All right, yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nathan Edelman with ID Bailey, and I am the independent external auditor. And actually, technically, for the twenty twenty-three audit, it was a different audit partner, different audit team. So my, my role was to really come in at the very end. I had a deep dive review. It's really get as much knowledge as I, as I can, and then I kind of- It's really get as much knowledge as I, as I can, and then I kind of, I take over for the, for the two thousand twenty-four audit, audit cycle. So with that, I do want to give you the, the ten thousand foot executive overview of the, the scope and the results of the audit. So I'm not, do I have control over the, okay. Yeah, scope, scope of, of the audit. Really, first and foremost, it's easy, audits look at anything and everything. Really, the, the purpose of the audit, it's to, excuse me, it is to ensure that your, your financial statements, balance sheet, income statement, we need to ensure that those comply with the governmental accounting standards. So spend the next couple of minutes and I won't go into, just give you the ten thousand foot overview, but we'll talk about governmental accounting for a moment, which is really just, just that. Make sure that, ensure that the financial statements are, are completely inaccurate. Thank you. And then you also have, you have grants. District receives federal and state grants and a portion of the audit. Make sure that the district is using those restricted grant dollars consistent with, with the purpose of those grant funds. So not so much debits and credits, but are you doing the correct thing with those? And then district, you also have a general obligation bond. You have measure S and scope of that audit, a lot of audits, scope of that audit is to make sure that the bond funds are used for allowable purposes. And then to the extent, we have something called internal control deficiencies. If those are identified through the audit procedures, those are required to be reported out to, to you folks here. So our, our job as auditors is just to ask questions and then we report back. But management of, of the district, you have Ms. Loza, you have the folks on the finance side for the bond program, the, the people, the folks who are involved with the, the grant compliance. Really, the district is responsible for the financial statements, for controls, for ensuring that, that grant funds are used for their intended purpose. And then high level timeline, this is how the audit, audit, audit should be conducted and typically January, February, we have planning, we talk about the timing of the audit. June thirty, district closes the books, auditors come in and we did, the audit was behind, scheduled by a couple of months for the two thousand twenty-three cycle. And I've talked with folks and the twenty-four audit, I am fairly confident that we can get it all lined up. The folks at the, at the district side, actually I've had conversations with the, excuse me, I've had conversations with the, the folks on the accounting side, and I think that the twenty-three audit should be lined up as it, as it should be. And so with, with all that, results of, of the audit, so a whole bunch of numbers, but said what we call a clean opinion on the financial statement. So the financial statement opinion actually says financial statements are completely inaccurate. They are, they fairly represent the position as of June thirty, two thousand twenty-three. There were what's called audit adjustments, meaning that the auditor comes in and says you need to change something in order for those financial statements to be correct. That's why we have what's called an internal control deficiency. The specific control deficiency here is something, not so much related to recurring accounting entries, it's fairly narrow. And I think it's something that I would expect is easily overcome for the two thousand twenty-four cycle. So don't know what happens in twenty-four, but I think it's something that I would expect is, is resolved when I am standing here next year. For state compliance, there's twenty-seven or so state compliance programs, and there was an error that was found with attendance reporting that is noted in the report. No single audit findings, so the federal opinion is what we call unmodified clean opinion. No, no findings there. Bond fund financial statements, again, no audit findings for the bond fund, both the financial statement side as well as the performance audit, which is probably of more importance to, to you folks here, which means that auditor looks at those accounting transactions, selects samples, and really it's make sure that those are all capital projects, they are in alignment with Proposition thirty-nine and, and allowable for the, for the bond program. And so there were no control deficiencies with that and, and no, no audit findings with that. There's a number of other items that are required to be communicated. There's a letter that gets sent with the audit that, that's in the packet, and, and those are the, the things on this slide here. And if you have any questions about them, we can, we can talk about them, but really nothing, nothing alarming, nothing that, that is, I think, nothing, like, super important for this group. So, excuse me, with that, I will take a, a drink of water and I'll turn it over to the, to you folks. And if there's any, any questions or anything that you'd like me to go into in, in more depth, I am happy to do that. Thank you.
If you don't have any, you do have questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you roll your presentation back to the la, yeah, that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, those little dots, are the, what you found?
Oh, okay, yeah. Very hard to read. It's like size two font. No. So the, these are, so in the, there's a, there's a letter that accompanies the, the report, and it lists out certain things. One of the things, what's called corrected and uncorrected misstatements, those are the audit adjustments as well as things that we said were immaterial to the financial statements. That's kind of the, the first big dot on there. And then the next one is what's called significant estimates. And estimates are things where it could be, there, there's a, there's a range of what the correct number is. In this case for, for Vallejo, those estimates are pension, it stirs purges, and you also have an OPEB program, very similar to all of the other school districts. And there are actuarial valuations that were used to record the numbers in the financial statements, and the audit makes sure that those actuarial valuations are reasonable, that they comply with, with the standards. And then the third one is about, about what's called an accounting policy change. The district, just like everyone else, implemented a new accounting standard about software subscriptions. In this case, didn't really have, had no effect on the actual numbers, but it is a change in your accounting policy that is required to be disclosed. Nothing in there is alarming. And then the last one, which I sometimes get the question of, what is that? And that's, I think, really hard to read, but it talks about significant risks. And there's two things, revenue and management override. And maybe the good, the important takeaway for, for that is the audit standards require auditors to communicate whether they think are as, as risks in the financial statements, as in where could things go wrong? And I've had, you can, you can think of it, if you're, if you're playing basketball, if you're, if you're playing basketball, there is a risk that you might sprain your ankle, you may get, you may get hurt. Doesn't mean that the auditor found revenue recognition issues or found management override issues. If that was the case, if that was the case, those would be reported as, as audit findings and in, in the report. Those are just things that we consider as part of the audit, which is true in pretty much every audit. And so the auditor is required to design procedures, to think about that, to, to search for that if it is the case, but no such matters were found because there were no, no audit findings there.
Oh, so after each one of those, I guess I call them bullets, you call them dots, I don't know what they are, anyway, they're yellow.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you have any recommendations?
Recommending, so the, really the, the scope of the audit is just, is, is ensure that those financial statements are complete and accurate. And then to the extent that there's recommendations, there are, there is a section that has the actual findings, and to the extent that there is a state compliance finding, and there's also the, the audit adjustments, which were the internal control deficiency, there are recommendations within there to remediate the findings.
No more questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come to the point in our board meeting for forum. Do you have any yellow cards?
I do, and I think this one would really actually be in interagencies. Mr. Rosal Eliga is here from GVRD, and we have a portion of our, our agenda, I don't know that everybody knows this, but we have a portion of our agenda that is set aside for other agencies within our community, our city, to give reports or, or to bring things to the board. So that seems, this is GVRD related, correct?
Yes.
So, so that would be the, that, this would be the time to, to have the report from Mr. Eliga.
All right, hopefully I'm not on a time limit, but good evening Superintendent Spalding, President Young, Vice President Fox, Board of Trustees, Administration, and members of the public. First, want to thank then-President John Fox and Director Quigley on GVRD and trustees about the successful transfer of Franklin, which has turned out to be a success for recreational programming, and the gym has become a staple in our community, which was very much needed. So I want to applaud you first for that. I'm reaching out as a community member to encourage remedies to improve dialogue and upkeep of school district and GVRD areas, and how can the staffs coexist to work with secure, safe, and accessible locations to improve entrances to schools and parks? So the input we received from our community include, quote, "A GVRD VCUSD Youth Commission, learning early on the importance of political involvement in Vallejo." Glencov Elementary Park, creating balanced traffic plan for both the upper and lower portions of the parking. Glencov adding a larger playground, soccer field, and basketball courts inside of the school in maintenance with GVRD. Hartwood and Castlewood Park, where I played tennis earlier, restructure for soccer, tennis, pickleball, and basketball courts, programming with Hogan Middle School. Vallejo High School and Jesse Bethel High, resurfacing the tennis courts to offset the traffic at both Amador and Glencov Elementary. Ceterquist Park, upkeep programs with MIT Disc Golf or a skating area. Patterson School, South Vallejo Community Center, and Carquinez Park, a playground, a larger playground, creating lacrosse, soccer, or recreational spaces with partnering with my former employee, employments at CSU Maritime Academy, so like sport courts in that area. Terrace Park, a labyrinth, or small track for staff and faculty to walk around during their breaks. Obviously, we heard earlier, revamp of EXLP Kids Club, before and after-school programs with newly credentialed peer teachers, as myself when I was teaching here for three years with the school district, who want to get into the education system by supporting them for mentorship programs or collaboration with administration and experienced mentors in correspondence with college and career readiness training. Summer, spring break, holiday break camps, supported by both the school district student employees, which I was one when midnight basketball was a thing here with our school district. And those student employees' income can be funded by ongoing sponsorships of tournaments or fundraisers to create scholarships and establishing an alliance for communities' service hours or volunteer work hours to adopt a, say, a street or a park with the school district. Franklin, which has been, like I said, an ongoing success, ongoing programming, the use of classrooms and spaces for tutoring, or nonprofit organizations to utilize a space in addition to creating safe, inclusive environments for different sports, such as batting cages, which we had here at the sports center, pickleball rooms. And I did the filming for Mr. Earl Stevens E40's street renaming and conversed with him that he would love to see a recording studio at Franklin, at the Franklin Middle School area. I know with our students here earlier that we're super savvy in social media, we can possibly create a communication role or radio station with OSCAT Radio, the school district, and GVRD. And with the school district, how can we promote internship, extracurricular activities, and trade school positions on your school website or your career fairs? And along with this, pathways for certifications and recreational roles to become, such as an umpire for Little League, referee for basketball, or coaches who want to receive those certifications. Once again, this was an input from our community. And lastly, on behalf of GVRD, we thank you for allowing us to provide programming at the sports gym, and I do want to hit on this because they did earlier. I'm a proud product of Wardlaw, Springstown, Hogan Middle School, and Jesse Bethel, and a former high school teacher who went on to college and wants to continuously give back to our community of Vallejo. So that is our input, and also just want to thank this continued partnership and your dedication to education in our community. Thank you.
Trustee? Getting out that lightly. Trustee Fox?
Thank you, Riz, very much. Wonderful report. And I wanted to let you know, it's been some time, past GVRD trustee Wendell Quigley would come here during, so we have the interagencies on our forum for, and specifically, he would come and give us updates. So twice a month after six, please come, any type of presentation, updates, this, and it's not timed, so it's just a way for open communication to occur. So I was hoping Gabe told you that, hopefully he did.
He did not, yeah.
Oh, okay. So this is, we haven't seen anyone since Mr. Quigley. He would come and talk to us during this time. So it's wonderful to see and hear what's happening and what your hopes and dreams are. So thank you very much for being here and for your time and sharing with us.
Of course.
I appreciate your enthusiasm when, because now GVRD is, is getting back into old school, and that's serving the community.
Yes.
Doing things that can be resourceful in the community. I'm really happy about that. So welcome back.
Thank you, Dr. Young and VP Fox. I know that Director Quigley was full-on at these meetings, and I used to be a reporter for Jesse Bethel High School when I was in, in, in this room before. And it's great to see that, yes, I'm appointed to be in this position with GVRD, yet there are so many folks that in my generation who have went on to do bigger and better things away from our community, yet it's important that this term of reentrification, wanting to give back to our community and invest in our community so we can uplift and upbring our community. And if I may, just, it's me being in this role as, for in the last two years in the pandemic and teaching before Jesse Bethel High School, I see Dr. Patrick there, this didn't, haven't seen you since, and thank you for that opportunity to teach at the high schools. Maybe I want to come back to the school district in this capacity. And as mentioned, it's been a tough road trying to figure out all the logistics and bureaucratic things, me being only twenty-six in this role at GVRD and now the chair this year. So we had the ribbon cutting for Franklin and ribbon cutting for Dan Foley's Turfield earlier today, but I just want to hit on the head of, I am here to collaborate and also hear the ideas of the trustees and bring that to whatever capacity at GVRD because this is all new to them. So just once again, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Well, I think, I thank you for putting, coming back and giving back. That's how you build a village.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vallejo Education Association, PEA?
Good evening, trustees. Happy birthday Superintendent Spalding. One more day before spring break, not that we're counting. So on behalf of the Vallejo Education Association, our executive board and our rep council, I respectfully request that the board room be returned to the pre-pandemic configuration. Our classrooms are back in person, full capacity, many are full, many are over capacity. High school students who come to observe should not be sent to the overflow room. They could have watched the proceedings from home. Observing a civic meeting should be done in person to really understand and observe what is really going on. Being sent to an overflow room sends a message that they are not valued. School presentations are everyone's favorite part of the meeting. Parents and staff want to be in the boardroom during school presentations, not just for their own students, or not just for their own students. Our students are our future. They need to see everyone supporting them as much as possible. Our students can't see people in the overflow room. Our students can't see people in the overflow room. Secondly, VEA worked for a really long time to get Thursdays into Article One as our contract, of our contract as VEA Day. Our district functions at its optimal level when its staff members can fully participate in meetings and events without having to choose between a district and a VEA event. Meetings, trainings, back-to-school night, science night, or reading night, or math nights have all been moved to other nights of the week. On Thursdays, VEA holds our E-board, our exec board, representative council training, site rep training, town halls when needed, new higher dinner, scholarship events, day of the teacher and many other functions that affect our certificated staff. Please respect Article One of our contract between the VCUSD and VEA, which names Thursdays as VEA Day. Thank you.
Thank you. The SVA? Or BEA? BA? BSMA? I'll get to you eventually.
Good evening, President Young, Vice President Fox, trustee Amboy, Flores and Gardner. Superintendent Spalding, happy birthday on behalf of BSMA. So our report for this evening, so we are counting two more days left before spring break. So we're at the site, we're almost there. For this month, we've been working on our third NWA. So all of our sites have really been pushing completion. This is like our third week. And as you know, our goal is 95% participation rate. And so we receive a daily, early morning completion report. And so we are all looking at it every morning. And so we're, we're, we're just about there. In addition to completion for NWA, we're also in a really good March Madness. This is kind of an annual competition that just across the school district in terms of improving and just, just increasing participation for the month of March. It's a great activity amongst school sites. So we have a lot of fun with that. And it's a weekly gauge and we have brackets and so we have a good time with that. In addition, when we return, as again, we're coming to spring break, when we come back, school year goes really, really, really fast. And so we'll be preparing for CASP and closing out the year. And so that's kind of the big items that we're doing at the site. And if you're not at the site, all of our managers, all our departments are, continue to provide support and services and training to all of us at the site. I want to highlight really quickly for BSMA. We are still, we're still finalizing our final social event for the year. And then, of course, we're going to be celebrating some awesome retirees that have served in our districts. So we'll be, we'll be planning something special for those awesome managers and leaders. And that ends BSMA's report for tonight.
Thank you. Student report. Student report. Trustee Ryan Taylor.
Hey, guys. Hey, everybody. Happy Wednesday. Hope everybody's doing well. I'll keep with the theme, happy birthday, Mr. Spalding. He turns about 97 years old today, so we love that. But also, I'll also keep with the theme of a spring break. As at Bethel, we are having our spring club festival where all our clubs, they gather in the quad and they showcase what they do, who they are, what they represent. Today, we had Her Club, which is like a club for, well, not mainly for females, but it talks about anything on the sun such as menstruation, just like female health and all that jazz and good stuff. We had a Fashion Club, which is like a direct as it sounds, a club about fashion. And then we had a club called Destined for Greatness. It's, it's a faith-based club, but it's not generally about faith. You don't have to be Christian or Muslim or any kind of religion. You can just come and learn and heal, all that good stuff. And keeping with the theme of spring, I'll also talk about spring break. Woo-hoo. Spring break is a much, a much, much needed thing. From, from January to March, it feels like a, a long march to like the end of, you know, this break is needed. So love that for all of us. Generally, I find that after the break, when, when all of us come back, I think that we kind of, what's it called? Lock in on like the grades and study habits. So if you see kids starting to hound you about grades or want to see what they look like, then you know why, because they're trying to make up for some stuff anyways. I feel the most important job of a public servant is to listen. Right? And I, I got to listen to a lot every day. Right? But a positive thing that I feel I listen to is that kids have loved the block's schedule a lot. Not necessarily the testing aspect of it, but they, but they've loved the block aspect of it, like one class for every two hours, three classes in a, in a day. We all love that and we're all very fond of that. I don't have anything else. You know, I want to keep it sweet, keep it short so we could keep, so we could keep the meeting rolling. But woo-hoo, spring break.
Trustee Taylor, what are the students like about the block schedule? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
The block schedule, it makes the day seem like very short, I think. Like you don't, in a regular day, it's 50-something minutes each class. And then you're like, you have one assignment from each class. So like, that can feel like a lot, but in a block schedule, it's more, what's it called? Separated. So you have a time to be in a classroom setting for that one class for like two hours and actually like, get a better vibe and understanding of what's going on. I get the example, this example a lot. Like say you only had one class to focus on for like six hours a day. Of course, your grade would be fantastic because all you got to focus on. So the block schedule is kind of that for us. Like it allows us to hone in on that one class for that long amount of time.
Trustee Amboy.
I actually heard a lot of feedback about block schedule too. One of the things that I've heard was, in certain classes, it allows a little bit longer instruction. So rather than trying to jam everything in 50 minutes, maybe an hour and a half gives a little bit more, more instruction time, more questions can be answered. And, and it would kind of, a block schedule would kind of feel more like a, like a college schedule in that one sense, that it will allow just more, just more instructional time that you, that they can get more beneficial. So from that's what, from what I've heard from many of the students.
A little history, I think Bethel opened on a block schedule, it was four by four. Yeah, so I guess we brought it to the district. We were the pioneers. Yay, Bethel. Okay. Do we have any community members, any yellow cards? That one, we put that in the inner agency. Report from district advisory committees, we have any of that? Okay, consent items. May I have a motion to adopt consent items A through K excluding E that was pulled at the adoption of the agenda? Trustee Fox.
I love Renaissance learning. I use it every day. But anyways, even despite, we'll see it soon. I would like to make a motion to approve the consent items 6A through K at minus E for now.
Do you have a trustee Amboy?
I second that.
It was moved and seconded, it was mostly seconded by Fox and seconded by Amboy. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Amboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Action items. Superintendent Spalding.
Thank you, Dr. Young. We have a revision of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. You learned a little bit about some of our Expanded Learning Opportunities Programs earlier. And Heather, if I could have you come up, Mr. Tapasio, our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, will be bringing that item to you.
Good evening. This item is just a revision to the plan that was presented to you earlier this year. This allows for a, some, some expansion of spaces at some of our campuses to bring some portables to a few of our campuses to better serve as a hub for, for these programs. And so this plan revision just allows for that and is re-presented to you.
And that's, that's not what we're looking at, which is the, this is a future presentation.
No, that's not. That's the next thing.
It's the, it's the report that you've attached to the, to the board agenda. Thank you. Matter of the board acting on, on that action item.
Trustee Amber.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve action item 7A, Revision of Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan.
Trustee Gardner.
I'll second that.
It was, it was moved by trustee Amber and seconded by Gardner. Roll call.
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Amboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Next item.
Item 7B is a constitutional advance of the 2425 property tax revenues that Ms. Loza will bring to us. And this is a fairly routine item that we bring about this time every year. And it assists us with budget and cash flow.
Yes, thank you Superintendent Spalding. As Superintendent Spalding says, this constitutional advance provides the district to secure the pendulum funding if it's needed. We haven't had the, the case that we need that advanced in previous years. So nevertheless, we wanted to ensure that the district has plenty access to funds in the need of any, anything and continue the regular operations without disruption.
And this is an action item, correct?
Yes, that is true.
Do I have a motion? Trustee Amboy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve action item 7B.
Trustee Gardner.
I'll second that.
It has been motioned by Amboy and seconded by Gardner. Do we have a vote?
Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Amboy.
Aye.
Vice President Fox.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye.
Trustee Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Information, Superintendent Spalding.
Thank you, Dr. Young. This is a long-awaited presentation regarding visual and performing arts in Vallejo City Unified School District. And the board will recall that there was a great push in our previous LCAP to begin the work to, to really expand our arts programs and to consider how we might provide a magnet visual and performing arts program at the high school level. And so you'll be hearing from Assistant Superintendent Heather Tapasio. But the gentleman, the very well-dressed gentleman who's, who's standing behind her is somebody that you recently approved his hiring. And that is James Orlando, who has been previously with the Vallejo Teaching Artists and done a lot of work in getting, teaching, you know, teaching artists really into a lot of our KA programs. It started kind of really, I think, at Vallejo Charter School, but it really kind of expanded out and has really grown this year as part of our LCAP. And so he has been selected as our director of visual and performing arts. And we'll be getting that work officially, I think, in a couple of weeks. But, but he's here tonight ahead of his first day of work to assist us with this presentation.
Good evening, President Young, Vice President Fox, trustee Gardner, trustee Flores, trustee Amboy, Superintendent Spalding and trustee Taylor. Thank you so much for allowing us to bring you an update on the arts education programs in VCUSD. I'm joined, as superintendent said, by James Orlando, the newly-appointed director of visual and performing arts for VCUSD. Together, we shall share the work that has been undertaken this year as we work to expand access to high-quality visual and performing arts for students in VCUSD. So of course, grounding in our strategic plan, specifically working to create a vibrant culture of teaching and learning and ensuring that each child has access to relevant academic experiences, including those in the arts. We always remain grounded in our strategic plan. Our vision for success is to ensure that our school campuses offer engaging learning opportunities across all disciplines and ignite our students' passions and imagination. Through the arts, we have an opportunity to grow imaginative thinkers, problem solvers and creators of beauty in our communities. And so tonight, you know, you saw some examples of some work that, you know, we won't really speak to this evening. Those are programs that are ongoing and funded through site-based LCAP and the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. We'll focus on a district-wide implementation that is happening. But, so everything that we talk about is in addition to the things that have already been going on in VCUSD, as you saw examples of at Penny Cook and through the Expanded Learning Programs tonight. Okay? So tonight, we will review what currently is underway in furtherance of building the arts programs at all instructional levels. I'm pleased, of course, again, to introduce James Orlando. And he's going to co-present this, this presentation with me. He comes to us with a rich background in the arts and has served in partnership with VCUSD for many years. And I'm pleased to have him assist me tonight. In addition, of course, to that work, you know, we continue to provide extensive opportunities for kids to participate in the arts beyond this program work. We have two funding sources for arts education in VCUSD. One is new, that's the Prop 8 Arts and Musics in Schools grants that were recently implemented. And our current allocation is $1,709,961 in total for VCUSD with a separate allocation of $69,432 for Vallejo Charter School. That, those funds have yet to be encumbered or used in any particular, in any way. Right now, all of the services that you'll hear about are being funded through our LCAP. Okay? And so just keep in mind, the guidance around Prop 28 is that the intent is to prioritize hiring of qualified art teachers and qualified staff. However, in these first years, as we develop a pool of qualified teachers and key job descriptions, we're likely going to request exemptions or waiver to use those funds in ways to enhance our programs through use of local artists that can come in and support through vendor services, similar to what you saw with services provided in Expanded Learning, some of those same local vendors, as well as like the organization that James Orlando previously served within, like Vallejo Teaching Artists. Currently, the services being provided that we'll speak to today are, are being provided by Vallejo Teaching Artists. We also have partnerships through young audiences and other organizations that serve in our schools. And like I said, those are currently funded through LCAP and as well as some Arts Council grants that are being provided to the district. So alignment of these services to be funded by, through Prop 28, 28 is currently under development. And each campus would be allocated a certain number of, certain amount of those funds that I mentioned of the whole and would have to develop plans for how to use those dollars. Okay, so in 22, 20, excuse me, in 23, 24, the work so far has been in consultancy with VTA, while, while there was research and development of arts programs at all levels, elementary, middle, include elementary and middle, to create a pipeline to the secondary schools, to high school. include elementary and middle, to create a pipeline to the secondary schools, to high school. And of course, then this other piece of work, getting the Visual and Performing Arts Director hired, has been part of that work. And so he is starting April 1st. And his role will be to continue to research the models and implement and develop the programs as they go forward.
Good evening. Good evening, President Young, Vice President Fox, trustees. Mr. Spalding, it's such an honor to be here. It really is. The arts are my mission. They are my passion. And so I am just honored that you trust me to take this on. I'm getting ready to talk a little bit about kind of what we've done, like what's happened this year, what's going to happen next year, and what's going to happen the following year. Just to kind of give a little bit of a frame for where we'd like to go or where we're imagining going. This year, in partnership with VTA, we developed our World Music Program, which was for second grade through fifth grade, which is a multidisciplinary program that incorporates high-energy, hands-on exploration of music and traditions of different countries and cultures. This year, we will serve 10 schools, a total of 2,351 students. Each one of those programs has a robust outcome, which is another way of saying art celebration for friends and family to come and kind of see what the students have been learning. Next year, we will expand, we will refine and expand our World Music Program to the remaining schools so that all 15 will receive that program. And again, crossing disciplines, which means it is a world music program, but it also includes art, includes some dance, includes theater, so that we're really crossing over the disciplines and hitting those California standards. Next step is to develop some job descriptions specifically for TK-2 and possibly 2-5 and to build community partnerships and provide areas of expertise. We'd also need to develop success criteria and student outcomes. So that's kind of what we're doing in the elementary school. When it comes to the middle school, we're, next year, we, oops. Okay. Next year, at the middle, at the middle school level, we'll be piloting arts integration programming at our kinder eighth-grade campuses and developing subject-specific programming where appropriate. This will entail both recruiting new arts instructors and working with our community partners to provide arts integration. At the secondary level, yes. At the secondary level, we have, we've hired me. Thank you. We're, what I'm hoping to do this year is to develop a community partnership database so that we can really look at who all of our partners are and have, it'll just make it a little bit easier and more streamlined and also make it easier for principals at our partnerships at the schools to actually bring programming forth. Develop funding strategies to support and expand our high school VAPA programming. Now, next year, what we'd like to do is we'd like to develop youth leadership cohorts that focus on the arts to ensure that youth voice is included in the planning and the development of all arts programming. We'd like to supplement programs that already exist at our high schools. We'd like to identify opportunities beyond the regular school day in both visual and performing arts. We'd also like to develop VAPA cohorts at both of our comprehensive high schools. We'd like to provide spring and summer break arts intensives that will kind of model that arts intensive experience and focus the summer intensive to, towards eighth-grade students matriculating towards the high school. The following year, what I'd like to do is to provide VAPA pathways at each comprehensive high school and then develop an extension plan to lead to a standalone high school for the arts.
So that's the end of our formal presentation. Other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very progressive. My question is, administrative research person, is that you? Okay. I was trying to figure out, okay, we're going to hire you and then hire another person?
No, no.
Okay. The other question I was wondering about was the teachers for visual and performing arts.
So.
I counted several that we're going to have to hire, and it ended up to be 10.
Yes, and so the funding is geared toward hiring staff, not just funding vendors. And so that is, that is a lift. That's why, you know, the discussion around, at least initially, you know, getting a waiver to just get started with external partners if we have to. But the intention ultimately is to have staff. One of the roles that we've discussed is, and you may recall that we had like STEAM assistants and activities assistants at the elementary and K-8 levels for a period of time. We'd like to have assistance, arts assistance, maybe serving because if we're not able to find enough art teachers, even on an itinerant basis for the elementaries, we certainly would like staff to help make sure the programs can happen. If I'm a classroom teacher and I have an art lesson, right, that I want to go do, but I, setting up the materials is an aspect of the job that can be a barrier for arts programming to happen. So maybe it's not always a teacher in the staffing position. Maybe it's an assistant. So we're looking at all options. But certainly, teachers are going to have to be a factor, especially as we move into the secondary level.
So we're looking for proficiency in art, performing arts and visual arts. So it would probably be advantageous to actively look for somebody that specializes in those areas.
Absolutely. And that's, and so Mr. Orlando being here and having those relationships and knowing kind of which rocks to look under would be helpful because we need to make sure we're finding people that have the appropriate expertise.
Yeah, because it's a competitive thing. Yeah, we have to have the best of everything.
Yeah, it is highly competitive.
Which I know we already started, but you know, we have to look further down the road. The other question is, would it be advantageous to us to have a pull-out program? That, and have a, that they pull the kids out to certain, especially in elementary. I know those teachers are overwhelmed with what they have to do, because I was a teacher.
Yeah, and so.
That would give them some time for them to do that if they pulled the kids out.
It could be. So the model around specials is kind of what you're describing. And that's kind of what they do at Vallejo Charter currently. The only piece about that is that during instructional time, there must be a credential person with those students. So even though they're pulled out because they're serving with a, you know, vendor partner who's highly qualified to teach art, they're not a credentialed teacher. So therefore, the teacher is still in the room with them, even if they're not producing, they're not teaching the actual lesson. They have to be certificated in.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm asking you. Will those, will we have, can we look at something that it's a pull-out program? Having a credentialed teacher in order to do that? That's what I, that's what I'm looking at. We need the best to deliver the best.
I'm sorry, if I could add something, because I think there's a policy perspective here. And I think that there's a recognition, a broad recognition that there's the, really kind of a sudden surge of funding through Prop 28, but not the pipeline of fully credentialed art and music teachers in the state of California to deal with this. And so, and some of you might remember this from, from the governor, the school services presentation in January, that the governor's also proposing that there be, you know, really kind of a carve-out in the CTE credentialing for artists in the meantime, or maybe permanently, because we know that there aren't enough fully credentialed, you know, art and music teachers in the state to fill all these positions. But there are artists. And so CTE works a little bit differently. Those CTE credentials typically follow a particular industry experience. And, you know, so the credentialing's different and it doesn't necessarily have to involve kind of all the degrees and credentialing that typically teachers would go through. So I would expect to see, and I hope it passes as it goes through, because the only really, the only way in my mind to pull off Prop 28 is to go in that direction. So that's, I'd be looking out for that. That's, I think we're going to see that come down the pike in the next several months.
Thank you, Superintendent Spalding, for clarifying that and a vision of where it might come from. Trustee Gardner.
Yeah, I was going to mention the CTE credentials because along with the CTE credentials, there's funding through Perkins for like the middle and the high school. So I mean, that would be a way, so, and you know what? A lot of districts don't know a lot about CTE. So this could be an opportunity for this district to be kind of the expert in finding out about CTE credentials and getting, we have so many artists in this community in visual and performing arts and in music that I think that it would be almost easy, in some respects, to find individuals that want to teach part-time, some even full-time, and get that going. So that could be an opportunity for us. I'm very excited about this whole prospect. And when I retire from the Board here, I mean, I do have a drama credential and I would love to work with kids again, just on a part-time basis.
One of the things that, you know, we're in discussion about is, you know, looping in Lily Beth Mora, who is, you know, on our secondary team and has those, has those connections to that work. And so I think that's just a next step in our, you know, analysis and development of what things will happen going forward.
Very excited. So this is nice to see. This community needs this, I think. We're an artist community and we should exemplify who we are. Thank you.
This is very exciting. Coming from a performing arts background myself, I look forward for our, for ours, our scholars, I like to call them, showcasing their artwork, also performing. It'd be great that, you know, maybe at the end of the year, when all is said and done, we can have a showcase, displaying their artwork. Also, maybe we can probably, in turn, also make that into a fundraiser as well.
Yeah. I think there's a showcase scheduled for the World Music Programs as well, right?
Like, we have 12. We have 12 showcases happening in the month of, month of May.
Trustee Fox.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Again, I'm very excited about this as well. And in the district where I work, it's also extremely challenging. How is this going to happen? So what, and each school gets a different percentage depending on how many students are at the school. So it's even been talked about maybe sharing a person within schools and at different grade levels, having different standards and then rotating those standards. And definitely, it's not a prep. The teacher must be there with whoever the person is. And for instance, maybe third grade for the first three months will be doing dance. And then the next three months, you switch and you do something else. So it's just the model, how it's been presented, we don't know yet. But at least it's been discussed and we're trying to find creative ways to either find people, and it could be a part-time or how to share resources and how to be creative of maybe a schedule and switching the standards within grade levels so that each standards get hit throughout the elementary as they progress. So it's just a very interesting and exciting process. And we will find ways to be creative to figure out how to get it going and off the ground. And I'll share the ideas. Anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Reports. Superintendent, would you like to start off?
Thank you, Dr. Young. Just a few things. The first thing, we didn't really mention it tonight, but I want to make sure we called attention to that we have two tentative agreements with our bargaining units right now, having completed negotiations through mediation with PEA last week and CSEA just yesterday. And so we're very pleased, you know, really want to thank and appreciate the district bargaining team and VEA's bargaining team and CSEA's bargaining team. I think what we came to was something that was really creative and collaborative. And so it's just, it's nice to go into spring break, woo-hoo, in your words, you know, with these completed. Now, of course, there's a little more that happens. There's a ratification vote that each, you know, each unit must hold. But we anticipate, you know, assuming that those, the ratification votes ratify these two agreements, we're looking to bring that to you in April and to get the ball rolling. So that, I think that was a really positive development, something I think that we can all be proud of. We had a CCE person in the back and I was kind of hoping he'd stick around because I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the, some of what we've been working on with them lately. As you know, they visit us usually about two or three times a year. And kind of the themes have been, you know, areas where they really believe that we have to make some growth. And so they've really, and they've pressed on us about that. But I feel like we're in a place where we're really seeing, and I think they're really seeing, you know, some progress in certain areas. So, you know, kind of the first area that there was a lot of work and a lot of progress, and I think that they've, they would have said that they feel like there's a lot of progress is in professional learning, because that was an area that we wanted to have some long-term planning and something that was very comprehensive. And so there's a lot of work that's been done in that area, you know, on a variety of things. But, you know, probably our main, our mainstay has been in literacy instruction. And I've been able to see the results of, you know, the core trainings that we've had where, you know, there's very, very high, the survey results show a great deal of support for those, for those trainings and a lot of satisfaction with those trainings. So we're looking to expand and deepen those in the future. The other area is data. You know, it was really felt that, you know, we don't really utilize data the way we could and should as a district. We heard that pretty loud and clear last spring. We have Lourdes Miller, who's come to us, and a lot of work that other members of the team are doing with her to kind of present data and really, really kind of, I want to say combine, but really kind of draw on many, many data, data points to build kind of a comprehensive view of how we're doing in a variety of different areas. And it's really also worked across into different areas and departments. You know, there's, there's a whole area that HR has taken up in terms of how they're using data, how they're using data on attendance and how they're using data, you know, to track, you know, hiring and all those kinds of things. And then, of course, you know, what we're doing with our, you know, attendance rates, you know, chronic absenteeism, you know, looking at our improvement through NWEA, you know, CASP, all those other kinds of things. And I think data is coming in a much stronger way. And I think you heard that recently from Mr. Greg Lindner, who did a study of our data systems and basically said, "We're off to a good start. We're off to a really good start. We just need to expand and deepen." And so the, kind of the last area, and one that I've been kind of trying to press on because I really want, I really want to be able to report to the Board and have CCE report to the Board that we've really made significant progress in all three. And that last area was service to schools. And so service to schools has been recognized for a while, you know, as an area that we need to have some improvement. We've done a lot of work actually in this room with cabinet and directors to really, you know, think through, you know, what it is we're doing and what it is we would have wanted or wanted when we were ourselves principals at school sites. And then we conducted a series of empathy interviews to really get some raw data about how people are feeling about that. And it's a lot like what Dr. Patrick did with the surveys, the morale surveys. You know, sometimes you have to ask those tough questions. You might not like the answer, but you got to know. You got to know how people feel. And then you, that's the way you, that's the way you improve. That's, oh, okay. That's how we make those improvements. So we've seen some of those. That's how we make those improvements. So we've seen some of those results and we're looking to, you know, make some moves and some improvements and establish some protocols and norms. So there's some commitments and some guarantees really that people can have at the school sites about what, what they can expect from us and what they can expect from the people in this building. And, um, so that's, that's been really helpful. And I, I would, I would think that, that they will probably report on that, too. It's been, um, I, I think, you know, pretty fruitful and productive conversations around that. And, and one, you know, ones that are, I think, you know, probably an improvement just in the conversations we've had over the years, uh, or particularly over the last year, that, that I think we're getting to a place where we're having a, you know, good conversations that are leading us in the right direction. So I wanted to applaud that. You will be hearing from them on April 24th. Um, that's what we have scheduled for the night. I don't think it'll be a full-blown workshop, 'cause that's a regular, uh, board meeting night, but I think they'll, they'll have a, a portion of, of that night. So that's, um, that's where we are with the work with CCE testing season. Um, so we're in NWEA. Last day is Friday. We're tracking the numbers, making sure those participation rates are up. And then, of course, we'll be looking at what the results are. And then when we come back from, um, spring break, woo-hoo, um, we'll be starting CASP, I believe, in April. Um, so we start getting into the state testing season. Um, and so we, you know, and, um, Trustee Taylor talked a little bit about the block schedule. We've built a block schedule that works at high schools for testing and it, and it doesn't shave off the instructional minutes that we have to have. And, and we find that a better way to organize testing. And as you've heard, um, there are a number of students who think it's a better way to organize learning period. So, um, something maybe to, to consider down the road. And, um, finally, uh, we're in LCAP season as well, doing a lot of planning. We're working with School Services of California. As we discussed, that we're really trying to be really thoughtful and, and, uh, really discerning about how we take LCAP and supplemental concentration money. Um, our unduplicated count is up over eighty-three percent. So that means only seventeen out of a hundred, or really only two out of ten kids are not unduplicated in Vallejo City Unified School District. So we're feeling like that's really where we need to start thinking about, okay, what are the things that we're doing? Because supplemental concentration was really designed to like give that extra for particular groups of students who are more vulnerable. But when almost all your kids are more vulnerable, then that extra really needs to apply broadly. And so we're looking at, you know, how we can really design and engineer our LCAP to be of, of greater service to the district, um, and to the, really to the students, but to the district in terms of how we best used funding and resources, uh, to, to do what we need to do. So that's kind of where things are for now. And, um, as you've heard in the room a few times tonight, uh, we go away, we have a, a long, uh, spring break. Ours is, my wife is jealous. We get, you know, two weeks' spring break. Um, and then we come back and it, it, it's a blink of an eye and we're up on that stage of graduation. So, thanks.
After spring break, usually things start rolling really, really fast. The year goes so fast after spring break. You say, "Well, wow, did I have spring break?" It's already summer break. Um, reports from board members. Who wants to go first? Trustee Fox.
Um, for my report, the first one was the, Dr. Young and I attended the County School Board Association meeting on Monday. And we're planning an event for in May. We don't know the date yet. We do need a location, so we might have to, um, maybe volunteer to host here, but we'll see. Um, the topic's gonna be reading. And Mr. Pacio, we, we're looking for a panel. So throughout Solano County, the district's elementary, um, sorry, we're not doing secondary at this point. For elementary, for reading, we're gonna have a panelist of reading, um, our curriculum from each school district. And for reading, the three things they're gonna talk about are, um, first, what benchmarks are used to assess students' reading if they're progressing and meeting the standard through the year? If they are not meeting the standard, what interventions in your district is in place to help them get to standard? And then third, a quick question, what do you consider, how do you gauge that level? Is the level an exile level, all the way through, or is it a different level? And so those are the questions and what we're gauging as a county school board to have a training dinner for our trustees throughout the county and our superintendents. The, um, also, we're hoping that Benicia, we're, they need, you need to get the license for this movie, a right to read. I mentioned it before, but we're hoping the county trustees and superintendents and staff, maybe there'll be a night and if Benicia can get that license, we'll let people know where and be able to watch that movie prior, hopefully prior to this dinner engagement. So, um, that's the one thing that Dr. Young and I are working very hard to have hopefully happen in May. Again, we might need a host, uh, place for all these people. Next tomorrow, um, the two-by-two with the city, our main topic's gonna be safety on Nebraska and continuing that discussion. Um, then the next thing is, the hardest decision for a school board is their one employee. And this board has been working very, very, very hard trying to find that one employee to replace our retiring superintendent. That decision for trustees, at least I'll speak for myself, is extremely stressful. I have been wiped out my energy so much just these last days because of this, the, what goes into it. You're trying to pick someone that represents our students, our families, that will work well with cabinet, that will, that, a person that's just such a match. And the pressure for that is enormous. And it's your, our one employee. And we need that one employee to continue great things with our strategic plan, our portrait of a graduate, and to really just keep this district going with the momentum that we have established. Thank you. So, um, anyways, that's been very grueling, but also exciting at the same time. So it's just beginnings and ends and so forth. But it's, uh, I wanted to share, that's a big thing we've all been going through. That's my report.
Um, I wanna add, uh, another question. I think that we had another question honored to that. Um, what interventions are, uh, in place if they don't meet the benchmarks? And how is it, um, how is it monitored? That's important. What was the other question?
Thank you.
Trustee Ambly.
Uh, the only thing I have to report, excuse me, um, it's more personal if anything. Um, uh, my, my daughter, who is a Jesse Bethel graduate, um, graduated a semester early from Sacramento State, um, in her, getting her Bachelor's of Science in, um, Exercise Sports Management. So it's exciting, thrilling, and I can't wait to see her walk in, in, um, in June. So kudos to all the teachers and staff. I actually reached out to a couple of her teachers, um, who made a difference and who was a very positive influence in her, in her education. And, uh, they just, just beaming from ear to ear. And unfortunately, I can't post it on Facebook or anything like that, 'cause I'm not allowed to, according to my wife, so. But I'll mention it in the school board meeting.
Well, when you participate in that graduation, it's a beautiful graduation. I'm an Aggie grad. And, uh, tears will come to your eyes. So just let them flow, because you deserve it. Trustee Flores.
Don't really have a whole lot to report. Um, I attended a VIBA board meeting and got information on that. Um, we're gonna try to get something together a little later in the year as, um, season of events is starting to fill up. And it's only gonna get more with the, uh, with the elections and all that kind of fun stuff. Um, yeah, one thing I just kind of wanna bring the attention to, to the board is, um, through, through work, I was up at the state capitol. We were, um, uh, doing lobby day. And I came across a bill that's, uh, Assembly Bill 938. And it's a measure that would establish state funding targets to raise teacher and school employee salaries by fifty percent by 2030. And that's gonna be done through, um, the LCFF. So it's just kind of something to keep your eye on. Um, and, you know, one of the things I've learned as, as I've gone on the board is, is the process of, uh, how districts are funded. And kind of just going through what we just did with, uh, with negotiations, you know. Um, you know, I've always said, "What, well, why don't we start at the top?" That, what I mean by that is I mean the governor, you know. State gives us more money. So, uh, you know, with, with this bill, if it were to go through, you know, that's pretty, pretty big, uh, you know. And obviously with, uh, budgets and, and whatnot that the state's in right now, we'll, we'll see. But, uh, like, again, just something I don't wanna share with you all and just kind of keep an eye on. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Garner.
Okay, I don't have really much to report either, other than I'm exhausted from all of the work that we've been doing to try to find a replacement for that guy over there. I did send all of you the February update from Vernon Billy, if you haven't received it from him. Uh, I also have a meeting on the 26th to be on the election committee for CSBA, for the delegate assembly. And we have the two-plus-two tomorrow night. So perhaps next board meeting I'll have more to report. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no report this time. My busy season starts after summer, after spring break. However, I've already looked at my calendar. It's packed. Anyway, okay. Community forum, it's not in a closed session. Announcements of upcoming meetings. Spaulding, Superintendent Spaulding, I'm gonna give you everything that you can get.
So we have a, uh, we have a two-plus-two, as, as the board mentioned, um, tomorrow at City Hall. And I believe it's in the Kennedy, uh, the Kennedy Room downstairs. Is it Robert Kennedy Room? It's named after Robert Kennedy. Okay, 'cause I think the library's meant, he's my favorite, he's my favorite Kennedy. So anyways. Um, March 21st, uh, April 10th is a regular governing board meeting. Um, April 18th is another VCUSD City of Vallejo Two-plus-Two Committee Meeting, again, JFK Library. And, um, that's a Thursday. And then April 24th is the second governing board meeting of April. And then I believe there's some, we have the two in May, the two in June, but I think we have a, I think it's May 15th. Just keep it on your calendar. I think there's a Deborah Keyes Wright workshop, May 15th. But this is, this is April.
Is there anything, um, for future board agendas that the trustees might wanna add or, or put on the agenda? Trustee Ambly.
Yeah, I was wondering if we can get an update on the, uh, the practice field at, at Bethel.
What else? Okay, that's all right. Okay. We've covered everything. We've had a very informative meeting. So saying that, I will say have a wonderful and safe spring break and stay healthy. This meeting is adjourned, 8:30 PM.